Okay.
Um, I'm just...
Okay. Check, check. All right. Check, check. Test one, two. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law in the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider any appeals from any decision of city staff in their administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here, and I'll introduce our board members. On the audience's left is Heather Ann Rowe. Next to him is Julian Neely. Next to him is Marla Jones. On the audience's far right is Tom DeCio. Next to him is Dave Gare, and then Rhonda Sadio. My name is Mel Pins, the board chair. I'll introduce our city staff, who will be introducing us today. On kind of the left side of the room here, Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner. We have Bert Dross, the deputy planning administrator. And then we have Chris Hiles Cove, the zoning enforcement officer. I'll cover the...Michelle Wall is our meeting moderator. I'll cover the meeting's procedure here just briefly. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of us. You may hope it's your only time, but we will guide you through the process. Don't worry about the process itself. But just as a few reminders here, first and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. The hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. This meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. If you don't have a copy of our agenda and staff recommendations yet, they're in the little black trays right here by the door as you walked in. Feel free to step up and grab one of those. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first section of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions that have been recommended by staff, or if there would be an individual of this audience or a member of the board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur before a decision is made. So I'll come back to the consent agenda in just a few minutes. But for then, the regular portion of the agenda, after an item has been announced, city staff will give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anybody that wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. We've got a microphone up there. You might need to just pull that down or adjust it. Before you give your presentation, we need to have you just sign in. There's a little sheet on the desk there right by the podium. We just need you to add your complete name and address of business or residence as appropriate. In the event, you'd need to be contacted for a legal notice related to the outcome of the appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to be respectful of the time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. After all comments have been received, the board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request and will make a decision here today on the appeal. Please note that it always takes at least four affirmative votes of this seven-member board for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until at least about one week from today's hearing if you would need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order. That document will be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the board's decision, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa district court, so if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. Any material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is part of the permanent record, so if there's anything you may want to present today like pictures, drawings, or documents, you can do that, but you'll need to give copies to city staff for the record if you have not done so already. If you'd like a copy of anything that's been presented today, you can ask city staff after the hearing. Just some quick housekeeping items. We'd ask, please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a great job on that. Please ensure your cell phone has been silenced. I think we're doing okay with that now. And if you need to use the restroom, you can just go back through the doors. You don't have to go downstairs. There's restrooms just to the left past the staircase. And once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. So that's our background. Again, I'll take everybody through this. So the first thing we do is we're going to take a look at that consent agenda. And again, items on consent, city staff are recommending approval for the requested exceptions here, subject to some staff recommendations. But before we look at approving that, I'll ask, are there any changes to the agenda, Frank?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Staff is recommending item five, which pertains to 700 Locust Street, where they are proposing use for a seasonal market for up to one day per week from November 1st through August 30th, essentially winter hours, to host events including retail sales, locally grown, produce, handmade goods, prepared foods, as well as live music. So they would be requesting a conditional use for a seasonal market. This would be located in what is the Locust Mall, Local Bites, that's located in the food court area there. So staff sees it as an acceptable use in that area, and so we're supportive, like to see that it get moved to consent. The applicant has agreed to conditions of approval as well.
Okay. So staff is asking us to move to consent, which would mean they're supporting approval of the conditional use subject to some conditions. Is there anybody in the audience who would want us to discuss this before we would look at voting for approval? If there's somebody that would like us to keep this on the regular portion of the hearing, we will. If there's anybody, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Board members, unless you have a concern, would there be a motion to move item five to the consent agenda? Motion by Marla, and a second by Rhonda. She beat you just by a nose. Oh, Tom's voting yes. Okay. So motion by Marla, second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Okay, so that's...we move item five to consent, unanimous. Okay, so I'm going to list these here. Item one is a type-two zoning exception related to some monument signage in a flood district in the vicinity of 3825 East 9th Street. Is there anybody in the audience that would be opposed to the board granting approval on that? If so, and you'd like us to hear the case, just raise your hand. Seeing none. Item two is a zoning exception also related to signage in a flood district. This is at 4660 Indianola Avenue. Anybody that would be opposed to that? Okay, seeing none. And then again, just for good steed, item five, 700 Locust Street, a conditional use related to a seasonal market at 700 Locust Street, which would be primarily an indoor market. Anybody opposed to that from the audience would like us to hear that? Okay, seeing none. Board members, unless there'd be any other reason to discuss or any question, would there be a motion to grant approval on items one, two, and five as presented with staff rec?
On motion to...
All right. Motion by Rhonda, second by Marla. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, so motion carries seven, zero for approval for items one, two, and five. So as I mentioned, we'll have a copy of the decision and order with those approvals. So since a lot of these are related to signage and special uses, give us about a week. We'll get you a copy of those, and then you can come down and apply for your signed permits accordingly. So if you were here for one, two, or five, those have been completed. Okay, so that'll bring us then to our regular agenda items. We just have two for this afternoon. Item three, kind of a dual appeal here, a variance as well as some type-two zoning exceptions for a premise at 2110 Guthrie Avenue. And we'll have city staff give us a brief introduction on this one to give us the summary of the variance and exception request.
Is anyone here today to speak on...are you representing the applicant? No. It doesn't appear as though the applicant is here yet. I'm wondering if we could work...move to the next item and...
Sure.
...the possibility that the applicant could show up.
It's obviously helpful if an applicant is here. It isn't always required, right? We can't hear the case without an applicant being present? Okay, but I think just for sake of time and consideration, yeah, I'm happy to move to item four, just as a courtesy, and we can come back to three and see where we're at later. So item four is a conditional use request for the premise at 2903 Ingersoll Avenue that would be related to resale...retail sales of tobacco store-type uses. So we'll have staff give an introduction on this one.
Good afternoon, Chair, member of the board. Frank Dunn, planning staff. Item four is located at 2903 Ingersoll Avenue. It is...the title holder of the property is Inglewood Property LLC, represented by Leland Hecker. The proposed business operator would be Puff Cloud Smoke Shop, represented by Zahidullah Salarzi. The applicant is proposing a conditional use to use the tenant bay that is to the...what would be the easternmost end of the building for a retail sales tobacco store use, where they would sell vapor tobacco, tobacco and hookah-related supplies, cold non-alcoholic drinks, and general retail. And so the property is zoned MX2, mixed-use district, which allows for the use subject to obtaining a conditional use from the board of adjustment. I'll go ahead and show an overview of the property. You can see it's surrounded here in yellow, located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Ingersoll Avenue and 29th Street. The property is roughly 16,000 square feet. There are two existing buildings on the premises. The front building, which is the retail building, that has three tenant bays in it, and it's approximately 4,400 square feet, of which 2,600 square feet would be dedicated to the tobacco shop. And then the other two tenants that are in the building is a...there's a nail salon and massage therapy within the building. Now to the rear of the...or more in the center, as you can see my cursor there, and I'll have some better slides in a moment, is a 15-unit, four-story building, and then there's parking to the rear. Here is the general layout. As you can see, entrance, and then you have the display cases, office, storage, and bathrooms to the rear. And this is the image that they showed for the parking. There are approximately nine parking stalls...or 19 parking stalls. Now, one of the things to keep in mind is that they are able to account for on-street parking, and there are approximately seven to eight parking stalls along the street. This is just the narrative, some of the information in terms of store hours. I'll kind of summarize that in just a moment.
All right, folks. Are you guys doing this on purpose today? Board members should lead by example. I just got to teach you. Continue, Frank.
Turn mine off. So here it is, nail salon, massage therapy, and this tenant bay actually used to be a chiropractic office that's no longer in there, so the tenant bay is vacant. Just a closer image of the tenant bay, corner shot, and then along 29th Street, and then 15 sto...or 15-unit, four-story residential building here. And then there's the parking to the rear. I took an overhead picture, overhead shot of the area just to kind of give a feel for the area. What's unique about this property is it's note along a community mixed-use corridor, and it has overlapping community and regional nodes. Community nodes are typically mid-sized centers that are intended for a range of uses, you know, and specialized services within a larger neighborhood context. So many of the things that you see on here, retail, restaurants, et cetera, are typical. It's also overlapping with a regional node, which is the largest nodes, and they're consistent of concentrations of employment, retail, and housing, so very much heavier uses, higher density in those areas. And so uses along the corridor, you know, other uses that I didn't mention, bars, banks, veterinary clinics, dance studios, salons, pharmacies, different-sized residential properties as well. And so staff did send out neighborhood meeting notices. Those went out October 7th. Back up just a moment. The appellant, one of the things that I wanted to expand on is they are proposing to operate Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then the rest of the week they would operate 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Specifically, some of the things that I didn't mention that they're intending to sell, vapor products, cigars, related smoking accessories, non-alcoholic drinks. They do not propose to sell liquor, wine, or beer on the premises. The applicant is not proposing any building alterations, and one of the things I also wanted to note is the parking situation. With the 19 parking stalls to the rear and the seven parking stalls on the street, they have approximately 26 parking stalls. Residential requires one per unit, so that's 15. The retail is...for the smoke shop would be seven, and then we would look for four parking stalls for the massage therapy and the nail salon. So they are meeting the minimum parking requirement. And so staff is supporting the applicant's request for tobacco store use. We believe that it would be consistent with the intended spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. It'd be consistent with uses within a community mixed-use corridor, regional and community nodes. We believe that the location and operation of the use would safely adequately safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the surrounding area, that it would not unduly increase congestion in the streets, diminish or impair any of our property hour...property values, or have a detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. These are the conditions that we have presented. With any conditional use, if the zoning enforcement officer finds that at any time the applicant has created nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating any of those conditions, the zoning enforcement officer could bring them back to the board for reconsideration or amendment of conditional use. We did receive comments back from the neighborhood organization and Woodland Heights organization. They had noted that they had received their notice for the neighborhood meeting that the applicant was holding the night before, and so that's less than 24 hours' notice for them, so they would like to see or ask if the board would consider them requesting a continuance so that they could have enough time to adequately meet with the neighborhoods, the neighborhood association. And so here's their comments. We did receive comments from neighboring property owners in opposition of the request. This particular applicant representing Divine Dancers at 2913 spoke regarding the impact to branding and the family character in their neighborhood along the corridor. I'll zoom in so you can read that a little more closely. And then they also had concerns regarding the youth exposure to such uses and the impact to the retail environment and the neighborhood. And if I need to slow down or move back, please let me know. And we did receive support of the associate letter. Another comment in opposition to... Comment cards. Leave this neighboring property to the west. And this would be to the east, across the street, and a couple addresses to the east, same side. And then this property owner was one of the comment cards that was sent in. And this is the...with all conditional uses, the applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting, and this is the summary of...that was provided for the neighborhood meeting. What questions do you have for staff?
Board members, any questions for Frank?
I have a couple quick ones. What were the hours of operation you...
Yes, so the hours of operation would be Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then the other days of the week it would be 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. So one-hour difference on the weekends.
And is that normal for a smoke shop, to have those kind of hours?
Is that normal? That is...I think it's more typical, but we do have shops that close a little earlier and close a little later depending upon the context of where they're located.
Okay. The other item is, did you have any discussion with the applicant regarding the signage that they would be using? And maybe you covered that and I missed it?
I did not cover that in the presentation. I may have mentioned...I may have mentioned it when I met with the applicant, but I don't recall specifically. I do know that that has been a concern with tobacco shops in the past in terms of coverage of the windows and the amount of light that is projected into the neighborhood from such signage. They would have to comply with the sign ordinance and Chapter 135, where only up to 25% of the windows could be covered. So those are some of the items that they would need to...some of the code requirements that they would have to adhere to.
Okay. And I was thinking about the comment about how...
...bars, banks, veterinary clinics, dance studios, salons, pharmacies, different sized residential properties as well. And so staff did send out neighborhood meeting notices. Those went out October 7th. Back up just a moment. The appellant, one of the things that I wanted to expand on is they are proposing to operate Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then the rest of the week, they would operate 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Specifically, some of the things that I didn't mention that they're intending to sell, vapor products, cigars, related smoking accessories, non-alcoholic drinks. They do not propose to sell liquor, wine, or beer on the premises. The applicant is not proposing any building alterations. And one of the things I also wanted to note is the parking situation. With the 19 parking stalls to the rear and the seven parking stalls on the street, they have approximately 26 parking stalls. Residential requires one per unit, so that's 15. The retail is for the smoke shop would be seven. And then we would look for four parking stalls for the massage therapy and the nail salon. So they are meeting the minimum parking requirement. And so staff is supporting the applicant's request for tobacco store use. We believe that it would be consistent with the intended spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. It'd be consistent with uses within a community mixed-use corridor, regional and community nodes. We believe that the location and operation of the use would safely adequately safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the surrounding area, that it would not unduly increase congestion in the streets, diminish or impair any of our property values, or have a detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. These are the conditions that we have presented. With any conditional use, if the zoning enforcement officer finds that at any time the applicant has created nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating any of those conditions, the zoning enforcement officer could bring them back to the board for reconsideration or amendment of conditional use. We did receive comments back from the neighborhood organization and Woodland Heights organization. They had noted that they had received their notice for the neighborhood meeting that the applicant was holding the night before. And so that's less than 24 hours' notice for them. So they would like to see or ask if the board would consider them requesting a continuance so that they could have enough time to adequately meet with the neighborhoods, the neighborhood association. And so here's their comments. We did receive comments from neighboring property owners in opposition of the request. This particular applicant representing Divine Dancers at 2913 spoke regarding the impact to branding and the family character in their neighborhood along the corridor. I'll zoom in so you can read that a little more closely. And then they also had concerns regarding the youth exposure to such uses and the impact And if I need to slow down or move back, please let me know. And we did receive support of the associate letter. Another comment in opposition, too. Comment cards. Leave this neighboring property to the west. And this would be to the east. Across the street and a couple addresses to the east, same side. And then this property owner was one of the comment cards that was sent in. And this is the, with all conditional uses, the applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting. And this is the summary of that was provided for the neighborhood meeting. What questions do you have for staff?
Board members, any questions for Frank?
I have a couple quick ones. What were the hours of operation?
Yes, so the hours of operation would be Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then the other days of the week, it would be 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. So one hour difference on the weekends.
And is that normal for a smoke shop, to have those kind of hours?
Is that normal? That is, I think it's more typical, but we do have shops that close a little earlier and close a little later depending upon the context of where they're located.
Okay. The other item is, did you have any discussion with the applicant regarding the signage that they would be using? And maybe you covered that and I missed it?
I did not cover that in the presentation. I may have mentioned, I may have mentioned it when I met with the applicant, but I don't recall specifically. I do know that that has been a concern with tobacco shops in the past in terms of coverage of the windows and the amount of light that is projected into the neighborhood from such signage. They would have to comply with the sign ordinance and Chapter 135 where only up to 25% of the windows could be covered. So those are some of the items that they would need to, some of the code requirements that they would have to adhere to.
Okay. And I was thinking about the comment about having, you know, children see those signs and be attracted to that. Okay, thank you.
I assume that you would have put it in here, but Lauren didn't send anything either way?
I had a conversation with Lauren, but I, what we're referring to is the avenues. I had conversations giving her the information regarding what was being proposed and the date and the time and all of the information associated with that. It is my understanding that she attended the neighborhood meeting, but I did not receive a formal comment.
Other questions for Frank? Frank, just very briefly, while this is a conditional use, generally, the type of use of a tobacco store would be allowed in this mixed-use district if the board determines there's no significant detrimental impact based on air quality, light, congestion, those general things that would not disturb the overall character of the surrounding area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And while I'm not looking for a big survey here, there are some other businesses that do sell tobacco products on the Ingersoll corridor, like what, K C's, Walgreens, I don't know, Dollar General does.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That is correct. And I did, I tried to look to kind of get an understanding of what was at play in closest proximity. There is a premium cigar shop that would be further to the west and somewhere around 1,000 feet away, a little bit more, I believe. And then to the east, what I found was a Dollar General, and that was, that was well over 1,000 feet. There is a CBD shop that is probably 175 feet, but that is a different category than what we're looking at here.
Gotcha. And I think maybe some chocolate stores and even a cupcake shop, right?
Yeah, some banks, yeah, a couple bars.
Yes, a lot of variety on Ingersoll. All restaurants. Great. If there's anything else for Frank. If not, the next part of the hearing is the applicant or their representative, they have up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for us to grant them a conditional use request. So whoever would like to speak, come on up. We just need you to sign in, Frank can show you.
Thanks, Frank. Yeah. This doesn't count as like 10 minutes, does it?
No. I'm gonna be nice to you.
Just kidding.
But we do need your name and address to kick us off, and then yes, you got 10 minutes.
Chair and members of the board, my name is Matt Connolly. I'm with NAI, Iowa Realty Commercial. Thanks for the opportunity here. I represent the landlord. I got a chance to meet these possible tenant, or tenant prospects. Sitting back here, I'll introduce them here in a second. They're, we've been talking through email and phone. We got a chance to meet yesterday at the proposed site here, and we had Lauren there from the avenues and another neighbor, Cameron was there. We talked for, like I said in the note, 30 minutes or so. These guys told us all about themselves. They are good business guys. They're very well qualified for something like this. They're former U.S. military, it seems. These guys, these guys seem to be well financed, ready to go. They're gonna put a lot of investment into this property, landlord. And we haven't negotiated a deal yet, so if it is granted, we'll see if we even get there. But as of now, the landlord is just going through the motions here to see if their use is even allowed. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I want them to mention their evening hours are gonna change, I heard that last night, to close sooner. I got some questions as far as a possible lease goes, how long it would take to be allowed for their use, like are we only, are we limited to a, to a, to your lease? And that's it. You guys wanna come up? I think it's important for these guys to introduce themselves. They were impressive yesterday.
Just need them to sign in here.
Hi. My name is Elias and my last name is Mangal. I'm also representing Zahid Allah, because of his language barriers. And we are looking forward to open this puff cloud, smoke shop. We already own a business on Martin Luther King. And then yesterday, we met with Lauren and there was another gentleman, I forgot his name, came on, yeah. And we explained whatever she brought to our attention about the lights, and I told her that we are, us not bringing, if that's causing an issue, we reduce that. We don't wanna put a lot of lights on the window, but inside we have to do some lightening. And about the, she was asking, she'd been to some of the stores that they are selling some products, since we have some like soda-like soft drinks, non-alcoholic, and I say under 21 is not allowed, then how they gonna get in? I said, as I took a few classes about selling tobacco and liquor, and anyway, we have to check the IDs. If there's more than one gentleman, he or she got like somebody underage, we wanna make sure to check their ID. If they are somehow in their class, that's what I learned. If they are doing, buying two, three different type of vapes, obviously we are checking. Since we are investing over $250,000 in here, and then we don't wanna put our business at risk. That's, that's what I brought to her attention. About our hours, and I also talked to Zahid Allah, that we are bringing down our hours from, we open at 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and we close it by 11:00.
One thing I didn't mention, these guys, after our neighborhood meeting yesterday, they went to the neighborhood association meeting and talked to them, too, if you want to mention that.
Yeah, yeah, we also went at 6:30 to their meeting. It was evening, like 18:30. And we answered if they have any question or any concerns, they can bring it to us. And we wanna be, we also wanna be a good part of the community. We don't, as, the more we have a safer community, the business grow better. If you guys have any questions, I'm willing to answer it.
Yeah, board members, we have questions for the gentleman?
Can you clarify what you said? You might have actually just said this, but if a child comes, are they not allowed to buy a soft drink? Or you, they can buy a soft drink in the shop, but you card for things that require somebody to be of age 18 and up for those particular things?
Yeah, Lauren brought a concern. She said that she been to some of the stores, like some of the stores, they have the THC and CBD, things like that. On their door signages, it says that under 21 is not allowed. But since you guys have these smoke product, including soft drinks and those things, how you guys, how you guys gonna handle that? If underages coming to school or kids are coming, want to buy a pop or soda? And I also bring her to, I bring that to her attention, that we are making sure to see everybody's ID, if they're buying anything. I'm already managing the Conoco on 136, the first avenue by Valley Junction. And even, I told my employees that they're not allowed to sell lighter, like lighter to the kids. That's what I told them. Because when we are investing in something, and we don't wanna take the risk. If I, if that's answering your question. But we already have those classes online for selling tobacco or selling liquor. We have to make sure somebody has an ID in the hand. We are not accepting pictures or we have to see, and we make sure the IDs are correct for the safety purposes.
Other questions? Julian?
I had two questions. One is related to the comments from some of the folks that are in opposition in the neighborhood to your business, especially around youth. And then the professor from Granville that's in psychology referring to just having the promotion of these products in the parameters of two schools, 'cause you have a school right off of 31st, a middle school, and then you also have the Central Academy not too far from that. What, what is your kind, what is your response to that in regards to just the exposure to these taper products to young people?
I think for, for the marketing and pushing the product, like everybody see, is the biggest thing is the signage. If we reduce the signages, I think people are not paying attention. But if we really, it's based on my thought, if you look at all like Walmart, now they're not selling it, all the gas stations, they have the liquors and all, but, but we are not pushing anything that to cause a damage to the skill community. Since I have kids, they're going to Norwalk, I live in Norwalk, yeah, we try to reduce those harming to bring it to our, to our community. And I think there was a cigar store in that, in that avenue before, they are shutting down somehow, if I'm correct?
Just kidding, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, and then there are many other bars and things, and I don't know if I answered your question correctly. I try my best, like I already have, we mean Z, we're talking about that, that to reduce the harming. If we are harming the community, we, eventually we are losing our business, and I don't want that happen. We really work hard for that money, and I don't wanna put it in jeopardy or to lose
And you had to mention that this is a relocation effort, correct?
What's, sorry, what was?
You're relocating, or is this an expansion? I think you had to mention MLK is a current location. Is this an expansion or is this a relocation?
And, and at the first, we were thinking to expansion the location, but now we decided to close the one we have already by MLK, since we have a big, like walking traffic and, and they, we have across the store some gamings, like if you heard of those fishing games and stuff, there's a lot of problems, and I, I wanna close down on that store. Yeah, we will stay with this one store. We pay attention to one of them. And we cannot handle two in two different places. That one is kinda, kinda headache. We are closing that store.
All right, other questions? I've just got a brief one. You mentioned that you were looking at hours that you're proposing, it would be 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And would that be for all seven days of the week?
Seven days a week, seven days a week, yes.
Yes, okay, all right. And your location on ML King, that's a pretty long stretch. Is it near Hickman or University? Where's, where is it located, your, your other current location on ML King?
It's by 20...
2500, what am I talking?
2500 block? Okay, okay.
And for Sundays, I'm also looking for the hours I will discuss with Z.
Sure.
Sunday, the Monday mornings are normally, they are super slow. On Sunday, we may close like earlier.
But at a maximum, you'd be looking to be opening no earlier than 9:00 a.m. and staying open no later than 11:00 p.m.
Yes, sir.
If we were inclined to put that as an agreed condition in our approval, would that be okay with you guys?
Yes, sir.
And related to that, and this is something I would probably clarify as we get into our discussion, this is what's called a conditional use, meaning if we were inclined to approve this, think of like you getting a driver's license. Once you get a license, you have to comply with the terms. If you violate the terms of it, if you cause problems, then the license can be taken away. So with a conditional use, if we would approve it, you spend a quarter million dollars and have a nice lease with Matt for a number of years. If something goes wrong here, if the staff believes it's causing a detriment to the neighborhood, congestion, noise, crime, they could bring it back to us. We could review it and we could say, sorry, we're taking away your conditional use, and you'd have to close.
Yes.
Do you understand that that is how conditional use works?
Yes, I have hazardous material on my driving license.
Sure.
Yeah, I do, because I, I used to haul petroleum, I was working with the petroleum guys.
Class A or Class B CDL guy?
Yeah, I did work with them, and I know everything. If anything goes wrong, it'd be a headache. And meanwhile, I, I did managing the Starbucks before back in Washington State, and I worked with, with this Conoco as a, managing their stores. And I did fire a lot of people, too, in my history, because I had drivers when I used to run my own company. And I know, I'm kinda just those guys, like you do it or you lose it. That's me. And then, it should bring it or not, I did work with 3D9 back in Fort, Fort Ragnaut, Carolina. I'm one of those members. And I know all the disciplines, we follow those.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicants? Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll let you sit down for a few minutes.
Thank you, sir.
At this stage of the hearing, we'll see, first of all, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for their conditional use? Anybody speak in support? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Come on down. You've got up to five minutes. We just need you to sign in, and then give us your name and address.
I think there's some confusion on the sign, and you guys printed your name and then signed. You forgot your address on there. Okay. Hi, my name's Carol Maher. Oh, this is really... I live in downtown Des Moines. My address is on that sheet. I am an opposite, I'm not a NIMBY. I'm sure if you guys know me, I'm the last NIMBY man. But I love Ingersoll Avenue. I ride my bike up and down the avenue pretty much every day. And there's a vibe to the avenue that really sits well with me, in addition to the fantastic red bike lanes, the storefront and how it's right up, up against the lanes and the sidewalk and everything is, really gives it a great feel. There's lots of diversity in the storefronts, but a common thread is that they're accessible and they're places that you wanna go to. My concern about a vape store is, I can't in my mind's eye picture a storefront of a vape store that doesn't have rope lighting, strobe lighting, and pictures of vapes and all that sort of stuff. And that just doesn't sound attractive to me and a place that I would wanna go into. So I'm not sure why the applicant wouldn't provide pictures of his existing business to show us that he doesn't have an interest in making his storefront, that he currently doesn't have his storefront looking like that, and it wouldn't look like that on Ingersoll. Don't even get the exact address, so I can look it up to see on Google Maps. So if I were you, I would ask for that, but I'm not you. I also believe there's new zoning regs that were just passed on vape shops and stuff. I don't know if any of those are, if we're, if we, if those need to be considered as part of this, I'll defer to bird on that. Parking is not a problem. Parking on Ingersoll is not a problem anywhere. There are 5,000 spots on Ingersoll. Parking should never be considered as a problem there. Parking on the street and slowing traffic down is what we want there. That's, parking shouldn't be an issue. You said you don't wanna harm the community, but vapes, vapes harm the community. It's pretty clear that people get addicted to vapes and can't get off, and they do harm to your body. So I, I kinda push back on that, that they already harm the community. I'm also not clear on that they will only be selling tobacco vapes, because you can put lots of other things in vapes. I didn't hear that clearly said, that there won't be other substances besides tobacco in the vapes. And there is the dispensary on the avenue, which looks like an expensive jewelry store, if you're familiar with it. It's got a beautiful layout and lighting and storefront, and that, that's a really great model of what, a place that sells products that I personally wouldn't use, but certainly looks inviting and fits in on the avenue. And I'm not sure of selling vapes and cigarettes and cigars and soda pop. If you can make it look like the dispensary, that'd be really great. I also don't know why you would need to sell soda pop, why you wouldn't just limit it to people that need to be age-restricted, because if the kids are the ones that are gonna buy the soda pop, why are you allowing them to come in to buy the soda pop and then be exposed to the other products? So I don't know if there's a big margin in soda pop, but I'm not sure why you wouldn't just drop those products and just focus on folks that are over 18 or over 21. Thank you. Thank you.
Carol, thank you for coming down today, and I heard your voice on my radio in my vehicle, I think about an hour and a half ago. Did you speak on Second Avenue?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, WHO Radio picked that up. So, yeah, yeah. So I get to hear Carol twice in one day.
Frequent flyer, also known as P.I.T.A., you can figure that out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Anybody that even wishes to speak in neutrality, just something related to the issue that maybe we should consider? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff, or anything? Z E O or anybody? Bert?
Mr. Chair members of the board, Bert Ross, planning staff for the city. The ordinance that Carol referenced was adopted by city council on Monday night, and that does impact future applications for tobacco stores, but since this applicant filed their application before the ordinance, they're under the...
So future applications could be starting, what, November 1st, or whatever the date is?
Whenever the ordinance becomes effective, it has to be published, and there's some certain legalities to that.
Gotcha, okay.
Once it takes effect.
And Bert, while you're here, I just have a brief question from a staff perspective. Again, when we look at conditional uses, we look at the things in the ordinance, the general character of the neighborhood, et cetera, but when people talk about things about, you know, potential health effects and addiction, and this leads to a lifetime of X, Y, and Z, when we get into those things, does that get us out of our purview as a board?
Correct, yeah, that's not something the board can base its decision on. It really has to be those nine criteria put into the Chapter 134.
Gary, you want to add something?
Could you re-ask your question?
Yes, we have certain criteria that we can look at if we want to grant or deny conditional use. The general welfare of persons in the immediate area, surrounding things, light, air, but can we take into account, or should we not be considering things when people say, well, these kinds of things cause health effects to users, or they are a gateway drug and they lead to addictions? Are those things we can take into account, or do we have the ability to evaluate?
Well, I mean, so 134, 6.4.8, which is where the standards and review criteria come from, specifically allow the board to consider the geographic location and operation of the use or activity itself, and ensure that it safeguards the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in adjoining or surrounding property. I can, I could do a little research while you're discussing to see if there's case law that is more specific about what you can take into consideration, but I think that's, in one sense, it's broadly worded, and what I mean when I say that is it's talking about health, safety, and general welfare, but then it's limited to persons residing or working in adjoining or surrounding property. So it's seemingly broad, but also has some limitation built into it.
Okay, yeah, sure, that's also helpful, thank you. Okay, so applicant, since there was somebody that did speak in opposition, that just kind of by default, you have the opportunity for what we call a rebuttal. You can have up to three minutes for any closing comments. If there's anything you'd like to say in response to the concerns, if there's any other information you want to present based on our questions and discussion, now's your time. We'll give you another three minutes. It's all up to you. If you want to use it, you can, you don't have to.
Yeah, I agree with her on some points, but one, I brought the children, it doesn't mean that we are on purpose exposing that soda pops. The children are not always coming and walking by theirself. If I see a child anyway, I'm not letting him in the store. That's very clear on our side. And the pops are being bought by a lot of, we take the children to the other stores, a lot of the bigger stores, they are putting in the tobacco, maybe they see a lot of advertisement. If it's about the windows, we are not putting anything on the windows to show the children come and smoke, we will never do that. And then, if it is about smoking, smoking is, or tobacco, or vape, vape is something new for the last maybe decade, for last 10 years that the vape is here in the market. We have the cigarette for 100 years, maybe more than that, if I'm right. But it is, we are not bringing that to the concern that we force and we try to, people get addicted to the vape. But I've seen addicted people on 136 on the Conoco, the first thing I open in the morning, a gentleman show up like after 6:00 a.m., can I have this drink? Like for the liquor part. But we are not selling liquor, and we are not kind of putting something that show that we are forcing this, that everybody should do it. We thought this is an opportunity to do this job in this business, because I've been to the restaurants, and I got filled, I got to other businesses, I got filled because of, during COVID-19. That's all I have. We are not, we try to be a good part of community. As I put my life at risk before for the United States, again, I save this country, and I'm willing to do that. I have children, and I already told them that. In the school, we've seen a lot of children does that, a lot of children get their mom and parents get called out, but we are not doing that. We try our best to be part of a good community.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Board members, any initial thoughts? We can discuss amongst ourselves here.
I just, the clarification, I do think we should put the hours of operation.
If somebody wanted to make a motion for approval, we'd want to have hours that they would be limited to as they had presented.
Right.
Right, okay, understand that.
I would also like clarification on the neighborhood association meetings. It sounds like there was the woodland organization meeting, and then briefly mentioned that there was a meeting the day after, but there wasn't clarification of like who that meeting was with, and how many participants were there from the neighborhood, that voice, and what was the outcome of that?
Yeah, our time to ask that would probably be best when the applicant's up here, we got staff, but I kind of get what you're after on that one. The neighborhoods are notified separately of the actual process, so, you know, if they, I'm not putting it solely on the neighborhoods, but if they wanted to dig into this, they could call staff and say, who is this applicant? Give me their contact info, and they could reach out. I think when applicants, you know, I'm not saying they waited till the end, but if they wait too long and don't give people enough notice, well, that can get people upset or concerned. But I think, I always kind of feel like it's our job to maybe kind of sort out, eh, not going to get you on a technicality, but you have a greater risk of not getting approved if you're not doing timely outreach.
Yeah, and I think...
That's about all I can do.
Yeah, I think it was just the mentioning of having clarification on those pieces if we're using, if that is, you know, if we're being fair in regards to sharing that, because based upon the emails that we have right here, it sounds like the neighborhood is not in support of this business being in the proximity of their homes or even their other businesses, and so just respecting kind of what they have, what we have heard so far from the folks in the neighborhood, doesn't feel like they're in favor of this.
And it's possible they may not be, you're right.
And did we get a card back from the neighborhood? I don't remember that.
There's an email asking for a continuation. I would just piggyback onto that and say, if we're looking at the nine criteria, number seven to me has been brought up pretty specifically by one of the neighboring businesses as this being detrimental to their business.
And one of my concerns about that is that we do already have tobacco and liquor.
Yeah, just pull it towards you.
Okay. One of my, you know, contradiction maybe is that we already in this neighborhood have tobacco sales, and we have liquor sales, beer sales. And I know the vaping is somewhat of a different twist on that.
Right. But by the same token, the zoning district doesn't ban additional uses based on a separation distance between where there is other tobacco sold, if I'm correct. And secondly, if we want to start going, well, these people aren't selling alcohol, but other people sell alcohol, and alcohol is bad. The challenge that we all have here is, yes, we think, we have emotions, but I want to make sure that in our decision-making, we're careful to not just let emotion drive our decision, especially when it comes to people's preferences for sometimes what I would call personal behavior. There are some people that think we should legalize marijuana, there are other people that say it's a gateway drug. So tobacco can be looked at the same way. Many of their customers could just be people that want to have a nice European or Cuban cigar. There are other people who just smoke like a chimney and are going to be kicking their way to the graveyard in 10 years. I can't be a decision-maker on that. All I can look at is the size of the business, where the doors are, where the parking is, the general character of the neighborhood. We have a lot of small businesses in this neighborhood, we have a lot of niche boutique businesses of various things. Most of them have a fairly mature use. There are art galleries, there are fancy chocolate stores, there are cupcake stores. These aren't selling stuff to kids, I don't think this place would either. We have a conditional use here, so I'm just going to kind of put it out here to move some things along, we can still have discussion, but I do feel as a conditional use, and made it very clear to the applicant, they run the risk more than anybody. If we would be inclined to approve this, and they invest in a lease with a property owner, they're going to have to pay that lease whether they're open or not, if they invest the money in this, if they screw up, we can take it away, and we've done that. So I want to encourage the board, these are always tough ones to think through, I get it. And when neighbors have a concern and neighborhoods have a concern, I don't take that lightly, but with our charge and to a degree our experience, we have to kind of sort through some of that, because, you know, it's easy to run with your emotion. I just don't want to be Professor Harold Hill in River City, Iowa. I'll leave it at that. Gary, do you have something you want to add?
I just wanted to update, I did a little bit of research as the board was discussing. I don't find any clear authority one way or another, whether this board, you know, how extensively this board can interpret the health issue. I was reminded in the research of a couple of things, however, one, the zoning authority that cities have is in large part premised on the city's ability to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. Another issue that I was reminded of, as I looked at the research that I was doing, and I thought of it when Heather made her comment about number seven, I think, is that it is the applicant's burden of proof, to prove all of the elements necessary for granting the conditional use permit. I think that that might have some bearing on your point, Heather.
That's good clarification, appreciate that. Other thoughts? All right, I'm going to try to keep the hearing moving here. I'm going to make a motion for staff recommendation for approval of the requested conditional use, subject to the conditions that staff have presented in 1 through 10, and adding a condition that the business shall not open on any day before 9:00 a.m. and shall close on any day before, or at or before 11:00 p.m. Is that clear enough for the record for staff? Gary?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, all right. And I think with some of the things you mentioned, Marlis, I think I got that covered. So that'd be my motion with the one additional item on hours of operation.
Hold on a second.
All right, good job, Dave. All right, so motion by Mel, second by Dave, so all in favor to grant the approval of the requested conditional use as presented, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Okay, all right, so the motion carries 5 to 2. You are approved, but again, much like a driver's license, don't go out and crash the car. So we wish you well with your business, and keeping businesses on our commercial corridors is a good thing. Again, give us about a week, and we'll get you a copy of that decision in order. Okay, so that'll take us back here on our agenda, we skipped ahead. We do have an item three, a variance and zoning exception request related to some electronic canopy signage related to, I think, a convenience store, 2110 Guthrie Avenue. I don't know if the applicant's here or not. Frank, any idea?
I don't believe that applicant is here, but we can go ahead and hear the...
Sure. And not to dig too deep, but, you know, maybe the applicant's new to Des Moines or the metro, do you think they understood that generally it helps to be here?
The applicant was from Omaha, so certainly they've got a few going. It's on all the documentation relayed to them, so maybe it's something that was missed, I'm not sure.
Or maybe it was assigned to somebody and I just couldn't be here, okay. Yeah, yeah, I, well, should, young kind of thing, yep.
But did he ask, was it a convenience store?
I, yeah, because it says, the business is operated by Maverick from Omaha, Nebraska. It's a convenience store chain, so, yeah, sometimes if you're chain in command, maybe somebody missed the handoff to be here today. But nonetheless, yeah, Frank, I'd say go ahead and present.
All right, good afternoon, Chair members of the board, Frank Dunyon, planning staff. Item three is located at 2110 Guthrie Avenue. The applicant is RRC Investments. The business that would be in operation is Maverick, represented by Lonnie Meisner. The location, the applicant, first, the application is proposing 135 square foot electronic and multi-vision canopy sign on the west-facing street frontage canopy wall. And then on the east side, they are proposing 135 square foot electronic multi-vision canopy sign along with an existing sign that's already on that canopy wall totaling 65.09 square feet. The electronic and multi-vision display signs are particular in that they're subject to being located on a monument sign or a electronic display billboard, for instance. However, you know, as we had saw, some of us saw last month, we did have a canopy that was part of a, or we had a marquee that was part of an event center use. In that instance, we could, when associated with an event center, we can look at those as a type-two zoning exception. In this instance, it requires a variance to be able to allow the canopy sign to be multi, well, electronic multi-vision display. So that's the first appeal. The second appeal, they would be five feet, .09 square feet over the maximum, 30 square feet earned on the west canopy wall. On the east, they would be asking for two signs that are approximately 65.09 square feet in area along the canopy, where only one canopy sign is earned. Now, they, the size of the canopy would be 35.09 square feet over the maximum allowed. So generally, if you have a canopy sign, you're subject to only having one on each street frontage, that's 30 square feet area. That particular frontage, the east side, they would have two signs totaling 65.09 square feet, and that is what's proposed.
I'll go ahead and get into the site details itself.
And so this is the old come-and-go that site that is now being rebranded to Maverick, which is why we are looking at the signage today. They're coming in, new, new business owner coming in, updating all signage. So this is just east of, east 21st Street, west of I-235, and then north of Guthrie Avenue. And so this has been, long been the location of a fuel station. The two signs in question, one sign which would be located on this west canopy wall, hopefully you can see the cursor there. Right now, they have two existing signs, and I'll show what that is, but one is the come-and-go brand, and the other is the price marker, not electronic display. And then on the other side, they have, which would be the east, would be, once again, come-and-go sign and a price marker. So they're replacing that with the updated Maverick sign. So they're replacing that with updated Maverick sign and a price marker on that east side. Once again, the west side would only be the price marker. And so this is just a view of the store itself. Couple of years ago, this site actually had come in to us because they had a poll sign that was taken down, and because it was taken down, it was required that they would have to come back to the board to receive a variance. They were denied, but this is what remains. So I, just a hint, because I know the site is familiar to many of you. This is the signage for Maverick that's on the east side, so existing, existing, and then, actually, they already replaced the Come and Go sign with Maverick, but now they want to do the price marker and electronic display. And so I did kind of look at these. Let's say they were apples to apples, just static signs, they would be about five square, little more than five square feet over what is existing under Come and Go. Now, so this is another view, existing signage.
And Frank, I don't want to throw too much at you, you're covering a lot of ground with us. And even for me, some of the stuff, electronic this and reader board that, but that sign you're showing now with the prices on it, based on its size and layout and how it's designed, that sign meets our requirements, correct? This price sign on the left?
This price sign here is existing.
Right. And that's okay as is?
As is, yes.
But by wanting to have something where computer graphics change the sign, we call that electronic signage.
Correct.
Electronic signage is not allowed on a canopy, is that correct?
It is not, no.
Okay, okay.
It just so happens it's a touch larger as well.
As well, yes, yes. But even if it was the same size, it couldn't be electric letters that change. But they could go out there with a pole and the old numbers and stick them up there every day.
They could, yes.
Okay.
And this would be what they're proposing there on the west side. And so you see, they've removed the Come and Go. This is what, well, this is what is still there, and then this is the new price marker, similar to the other side, size, all of that. And so probably could've gotten a better picture of that, but you see it, the sign's right there, the price marker, no Maverick located there. They did update the rest of their signage as allowed by rights, not part of the presentation. And so, you know, staff did send out neighborhood meeting notices to the Fairmount Park Neighborhood Association on October 7th, so they did read, received notification. A couple of things when it comes to a conditional or a variance of the requirement, the applicant must demonstrate that the property cannot yield a reasonable return for any use permitted by the subject zoning regulations. Failure to yield a reasonable return may, it may not only be shown by proof that the owner has been deprived of all beneficial or productive use of the subject property. Basically, it's not sufficient merely to show that all the value of the property, of the land, has been depreciated or that allowing the zoning variance would give the property owner ability to maintain a more profitable business. They also have to demonstrate that the plight of the owner is not due to unique circumstances of their own making and that the use or construction to be authorized wouldn't, by the zoning variance, would alter the essential character of the area. And so staff does not believe that the applicant has met that criteria and has recommended that the board deny the requested variance for the electronic multi-vision display. However, in keeping with the existing signage that's there and the quantity that they're proposing, staff is recommending type-two zoning exception for 135.09 square foot static canopy sign on the west-facing street frontage canopy wall and one same-size static canopy sign on the east-facing frontage wall in addition to the existing canopy sign that is there totaling 65.09 square feet, subject to the conditions that any canopy sign shall be non-electronic in accordance with city code, and any signage shall be installed by licensed sign contractor in accordance with sign permits issued by the city's permit development center. We did, the property owner did submit comic card and support, but that is, that's all we received. What questions do you have for staff?
Questions for Frank?
One question is, what was, what is the reasoning around not having it have electricity or be electronic?
Great question.
I prefer that the applicant speak to that.
Yeah, why does the code ban electronic signage in this district or this type of application?
The, partially, it's the character of the area, it's the impact on joining residential cars driving by, the glare.
They're just more vibrant in color and they just pop, right?
Correct.
Could they have those same existing price numbers, those manual ones up there? Could they have those illuminated from behind or like an illuminated sign on the canopy?
That's, that's a good question. I've not seen that proposed.
And I know that's not what we're here to determine, but just as a comparative thing, if it's a static number, physical sign that's lit from behind, how is that much different than an electronic number that would change once a day?
So now there, when it does come to canopy signs, there are some limitations in terms of how they can be lit.
Yeah.
You know, part of the canopy signage is the direction of those, while there isn't residential to the east or west, that would be a component when it comes to canopy signs.
So also with, so with a non-electronic canopy sign, how are these, because I assume they change those prices, and they manually do that, how do they manually do that?
I imagine, well, I've seen folks go out with the pole and, you know, yeah, and basically they're suctioning them up and down. I've never done it myself, so...
So that kinda goes to my question a little bit in regards to like practical difficulty, because in a way, that's not like ADA compliant in a way, and it sounds like the electronic would then open that job to be a little bit more compliant for anybody to be able to change those signs. And so it's kinda going to like the practical difficulty of those and also like what's the safety of consumers that are using that gas station that, when they're doing that changing and all those different things? Could electronic just make it easier on everybody and also increase the safety of people?
Yeah, and what we're really looking on that one is at the variance criteria, which is what they have to satisfy, and that's showing that the property couldn't yield, without the variance, they couldn't yield a reasonable return on the property. It's been a gas station, it's operated as such, it meets the criteria, so I don't know that they can make that argument, they would probably have to be here to speak to that. The plight of the owner is not, is due to unique circumstances of the owner's own making, and then it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And so those are the criteria we're looking at when we're looking at the variance.
Because I was just thinking about ways that technology advances and it might make things a lot more efficient and effective, especially for those that are working and having the responsibility of changing those things and also their surroundings to ensure that it's a safe modification that's being done. It seems like, the electronic route seems a lot more effective and efficient for all those possibly involved and that are surrounded by it.
Yep.
Frank, if this electronic sign was on a monument sign, it'd be okay.
And they do have a monument sign with electronic display. It's limited to 24 square feet.
Gary, did... And so we're trying to control what goes on a canopy, and they don't want electronic up there currently, right?
The code only allows...
They don't want electronic up there. And then what we've dealt with a lot with electronic is, is we have scrolling electronic messaging signage, whatever you wanna call it.
Changing...
And we have static, and this is static. So this would not change, it's just lit, it's numbers. The only time it changes is when the price of fuel goes up or down versus a message that's being scrolled across for the consumer, and then that's regulated by how often it can change and the speed that it runs, because they don't want people being distracted driving, trying to read the sign, right?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not trying to quiz you here, I'm just, I kinda get what they're, where they're headed with this. I think we got canopies all over this town, and I think we're gonna be dealing with, if we grant this, we're gonna be dealing with every canopy in town that wants to do this. And if you give it to one, you can't deny it to anyone else, I wouldn't think.
Gary, we've got some good questions from the board members here, but do you have something you want to add?
I do. I think, you know, the points that the board bring up are well worth considering. I think, however, it's important to remember the purview of this board as well as the review criteria for this specific application. The, I think the issues that the board members raise are policy decisions that are more in the nature of legislative decisions that would be for the city council to make when they adopt or amend the zoning code. And the sole question before this board is whether, without this variance, this, can this property have any economic return whatsoever? Remember, this is an incredibly high bar to clear. They have to show, the applicant has to show that they can't do anything economically viable with this property without this specific change.
That's a good point of clarification, that we always say the variance test is a high bar, the exception level is a little less, where you can give a little elbow room. And Frank, they are still using, I want to call it the poll sign, the double leg, they're still using that to put price numbers on?
Well, that...
Or, it's still there, right?
It's still there.
Yeah, it has prices, current prices on it. I'd like to see how they get the signs up on that one. It's way up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think zoning enforcement might be able to speak to that.
Sure, sure. That's okay, 'cause I know that sign is not what the agenda is about today.
East Guthrie is my entrance and exit.
Yes.
And yes, it's still there.
Yes, yes. Well, at least they don't have the red flashing beacon on top that they had 15 years ago. So, other questions for staff? Okay. Great, appreciate the questions from my colleagues here. Thank you, Frank. So applicant or representative of the applicant, going once, going twice, anybody speaking support of the applicant, seeing none, anybody speaking opposition? Come on up. Thank you for your patience and waiting today. You've seen how this works, we just need you to sign in with your name and address, and then give us your name and address when you start your comments. You've got five minutes.
Can I do have something for the projector?
Sure, yeah. If you've got something you'd show, we can have staff help you get the camera up and get that centered for you.
It's a good afternoon. My name is Alana Sodders. I reside at 2223 East 21st Street. I am the house right across from Maverick, the gas station. So I've resided here since 2002, and I just wanted to mention that the current signage and lighting at Maverick in general is a nuisance. If additional signs and lighting are added, that will just add to the light pollution and it'll also add to the loss of enjoyment of my property. The gas station, even though there is a privacy fence, it still lights up my backyard as well as my front yard. There is no break from the lights. They don't close down at 10:00 p.m. It's 24/7. I've tried privacy curtains, the blackout curtains, light still seeps through, so I've tried to do things myself, and I just worry that if they do permit the changes, that it'll just worsen. And I think a solution other than the pricing per se, but advertising Maverick as a company, they could do advertisement on DOT signs, if that's what their goal is. And I did not have a chance to mail that in, so that is why that is up on the display.
That's okay, yeah.
But yes, my main two points are the lighting pollution and loss of enjoyment of property since I am right across from Maverick Gas Station.
And Alana, I'm kinda familiar with that residential neighborhood, a friend that used to live there. Are you south across Guthrie then? Or are you, can staff bring up the area map? She would...
Can I?
Yeah, so where are you at from, east 21st, so are you north?
Yes, so I'm in that house.
You're south?
Yep.
Okay, yep.
And I own the side lot as well, so that's also a loss of enjoyment of the side lot.
I've got you, yeah.
I remember you from when we did the Come and Go cabinet.
Yes.
Yeah. So are you saying it's brighter now, that it's been sold?
I guess, I don't really compare. I think they have, I haven't noticed any change, but they're just bright in general, the gas station, but, yeah.
So it's bright enough, in your opinion, as it is?
Yes, it's bright enough as it is. If they do add additional lighting, that won't be favorable.
Mm-hmm, I got you. Okay. Okay. Well, Alana, I want to thank you for coming down. I think you're the first person in my many years here that's brought their card with them in person and presented, whether for, against, or neutral, so I appreciate your dedication to come down here today.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else wants to speak in opposition? Anybody speaking neutrality? Any further questions for staff as we close? Anything staff wants to add? So no rebuttals, so we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. All right, some of you eastsiders, what do you think?
I think no.
Because? Because?
It does not meet the variance test.
I would agree with Marlis. And I like the point that Dave brought up too, about opening Pandora's box.
And they do have an electronic sign that is changeable at street car vehicle level on a monument sign that tells people what the price of the gas is.
It's really annoying.
I appreciate Julian's comments on maybe some bigger picture things, but maybe there's some things, you know, in looking at where we fit into the picture. It's that character and, in my opinion, the things that Alana just brought up. I think that's very important. So Marlis, you have a motion then?
Yes, I would, I would move to accept the recommendation by staff.
Okay, so you'd be denying the variance for the electronic sign, but the remaining...
Zoning exception.
Exceptions, okay, as presented. Would there be a second? All right, second by Rhonda. All those in favor to deny the variance but grant the limited exception, raise your right hand. hand, say aye. All right, looks like we're unanimous, so that's seven zero, okay. All right, well, I think that concludes our agenda items for today, so audience, we thank you for coming down, sharing your comments with us. For business items?
I have a quick one.
Oh.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no.
I don't want to keep anyone here longer than they need to, but could we get like a quick rundown of what the new zoning things that were passed may affect us going forward with the tobacco and the signs, and the, I mean, if this is going to be a whole thing, we can schedule it, right? Oh, sure, whatever works.
There was, if you give me like two minutes, there was a, a nice little summary in the packet that went to council that I think went to P&amp;Z, I could kind of pull that up.
You want to pull that up? While we do that, let's do our minutes from last month for those who were present.
I'll make a motion.
If you were present last month, any changes, if none, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve by Heather Ann, would there be a second?
Second.
Second by Marlis, all those in favor who were present last month, so that's six to zero, good job. All right, so minutes are approved, I don't think we have any other new business, but yes, if it's just kind of general information sometimes, especially if there's code changes coming up, once in a while, we can do that on an annual basis, but if it's something new and interesting, hot off the press. Maybe Gary can give us at least just a quick synopsis here.
There it is, all right, so the ones that you're most likely going to see, that are going to have some effect here, the second one here, the liquor and tobacco sales regulations, so there, there would be a 500-foot separation distance for tobacco stores, and that has a specific definition. We also, so previously, the code did not cover any vape products, it only covered like cigarettes, cigars, tobacco specifically, so we did adopt a definition that includes vapor and alternative nicotine products.
That includes CBD in all the, whole area?
It would include CBD only if it were vaped, and there's a definition of what a vapor product is, and my understanding is that CBD vapes are not legal in Iowa, but I could, I could be wrong on that. I think for like the hemp-derived THC products, I'm fairly certain that those are not allowed to be in a vape format. There are THC products that are vaped, those are in very limited locations, the only one around here is in Windsor Heights, so it's not even within Des Moines, I think Sioux City has one, and.
I guess my question is, not that we do zoning for, I guess, Windsor Heights, right? But if, if it was on the Des Moines side, within 500 feet of the place you're mentioning?
It probably wouldn't be a tobacco store, if it, you know, we'd have to look at the definitions, we'd have to look at the proposed uses, I can't, I can't give you an answer with those, that many unanswered questions on it. And specifically with like, with the THC, it's so heavily state-regulated, I'd have to look at any kind of issues with that as well, so.
But essentially, there's now a separation requirement happening?
For tobacco stores.
For tobacco, and vape.
Which will include vaping.
Correct, correct.
So a new application won't even be heard by us, or will it be heard?
It would need a variance of that separation distance.
Yeah, if, if there were existing tobacco stores within the 500 feet.
Within the 500 feet, right.
But they still need a conditional use anyway, right?
Correct, yeah, it would be a 500-foot separation from other tobacco stores, plus 500 feet from any church, place of worship, school, daycare.
There we go, Heather.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct. And to be honest, this site did meet the separation, the site on Ingersoll did meet the separation distances that will be in effect from this point forward.
Not within 500 feet?
Not within 500 feet, right?
Yeah, if we're talking like, like Ingersoll again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, based on amount of sales, as well as size, or something, right?
The tobacco store, it has to be primarily engaged in the business of selling tobacco or vapor or alternative.
Like what we saw today.
Correct.
And then for the pole sign, is that going to affect us?
What do we have for pole signs?
That just allows existing pole signs to do a little more work than they're allowed to do.
Okay, so if we had heard the come and go thing with Alana, where, however long ago, and this was part of the code?
I don't think so, I think that was completely removed.
Right.
And so they lost the rights when they took it down, where this would allow them to do some modifications, while it's still up.
Okay, that, that. We had one on Southwest 9th, where they had replaced some cabinet stuff on top of it, and under the current code, took it too far, but under the, these changes, they could then have done that, right?
Yeah.
Around Park and Southwest 9th somewhere.
So you're saying with this Maverick site, if they would have just like attached it to the existing sign?
Are you talking the, the gas prices?
Yeah, they would have just like made an attachment, that would have been approved, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay, I'm just trying to look for clarification in regards to like, what is the definition in regards to like adding?
Yeah.
And what?
So if they would have kept their pole sign, like we saw the photo that Frank showed that showed the pole sign that was missing the original come and go circle.
Yeah.
Under this amendment, they could have maybe made that circle a little bit bigger if they wanted.
Or change the faces in and out, regardless of value, even if it was damaged, or, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're being gentler and nicer with the ordinances, it sounds like, yeah. Yeah, well.
Right, right. Yeah, like 10 years ago, the council was pretty big on limiting where electronic signs could go.
Yes. Especially when we got into motion signage, and everybody wanted, and then those LEDs burn out and they sit there empty now on Southeast 14, ha ha.
Right, right, and so the council's solution at that time was just allow electronic signs on monument signs, as long as they didn't.
Thanks for coming in, Carol.
So, yeah, so really billboards, and then the 24 square feet of monument signs are the only places the electronic signs are allowed, and then, as Frank mentioned earlier, event centers can now get electronic signs through a type 2 design, or a type 2.
Because they're a special class in zoning of size and scope.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And Heather, I think the only other, the other main one here that you see right under the liquor and tobacco sales regulations is a variance test language. Obviously, we just talked about the traditional variance test, which is, you know, that, that it can't have like any economic return. This, the state changed with respect only to certain numerical limitations, there is a lower burden.
What is a numerical standard?
Well, so the, the state code lists some specific, such as like setbacks, things like that. Obviously, there's not any, there's not any case law or regulatory guidance out yet as to what that means, because it's so new, it hasn't been, it hasn't been tested, so there will, if that issue comes before this board, it will be up to this board to make an interpretation. And so that is, the test for that is essentially the same test that we use right now for the type 2 zoning exception, which is the undue, like a undue burden.
Is it, kind of go back to the comment about getting email, that kind of provides a synopsis of all these different things?
Sure.
Especially the variance test language, I think that would be really helpful.
Sure.
That we can refer back to.
Not a problem.
Do you guys, for lack of a better term, didn't you used to have like these blue papers or something that, as a thing came forward to council, the background was there, there was like a, a little discussion paper that helped support?
Yeah, it used to be called a blue letter, now they're called council communications, but.
Yeah, if you, if that's either part of this, or if you could share that?
And we didn't really, we don't do them as much as we used to, so the, we call it a roll call letter, it's the letter from the planning zoning commission.
Sure.
This document I have here, this is really the letter from the planning zoning commission stating on X state, they approved this, and then it's essentially the staff report that talks about the changes.
There, okay, but the idea is it gives the reasoning of why these changes were either council wanted you to explore them, or why you've brought them to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gives a little bit of the logic of why the changes are being made, right?
Yeah, but there's a lot of the information, Julian, that I think you're looking for, if you went to the council agenda, you could see all of the documentation on it.
I think it would also be helpful to, like I do appreciate the recommendations and the explanations that you'll provide underneath each component that is necessary, some of them arguably can be like subjective, and so understanding like how you are defining certain terms, especially kind of going back to that number seven, and regarding the tobacco shop, and even like the environmental piece, because a lot of those things can, are a bit broad in regards to how you.
I think they were designed to be a bit broad, so it gave, gives the board more latitude too.
Yeah, and I think it'd just be nice to have a little bit of your context of like how y'all are defining health, and coming up with the explanation of like, we, this meets our standard in regards to not being impacting health, or things like that.
Sure.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Gee, that was nifty, I enjoyed that.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Yes, as I say sometimes in our preamble, we're informational and educational, so appreciate everybody being here today, this hearing is adjourned.